Item number two is communications, just some information and counter information. Our call break will be on October 5th and 6th. That's on Thursday and Friday, we'll have a Thursday weekend. But again, our call break will be on October 5th and 6th, which is on Thursday. We've also completed our Jackson County High School cafeteria renovation. We received the tables back from the last one we had, Mr. Harris. So Cameron, if you want to put those tables up?
Yes.
I was very impressed with how the project went well. I put service director in student, I was very pleased with it. And I guess the most important question, Mr. Harris, how did the students feel about it?
They loved it. They really liked the high top tables and they liked all the branding of the Jackson County on the different tables and the design. It also gave us about, wherever needed to, we could also seat about forty more students in each room.
Okay, good. Any questions about the renovation project? This is now complete. Okay, item two A, Family Healthcare Associates School Nurse Program Presentation, Carla Toppin. Are you ready, Carla?
Okay. I'm Carla, I'm the school nurse at Toner. And we are here just to kind of introduce ourselves. This is Kinsha Robinson, she is the nurse at the P. And then back here we have Ashley Clinton, she's the nurse at the middle school. And then we have Liz Martin, the nurse at the high school. We also have Amanda Long, that's the nurse at St. Anne's, but she is out sick. And I also have with me our director, Ms. Elizabeth Frederick, she is the school health director. And she has a little presentation, but we have another lady that she's kind of a little bit lost on right here with our presentation. She's about five, ten minutes out, so she should be here any minute.
That would be nice.
So if we want to wait, we can wait for her.
Do you want to go ahead, Liz, or we can wait, whatever you guys want?
She, I actually have the presentation in my hand. I think Kim will want us to wait for her, for her though, because she has one for each one.
We can skip on that. Right. And so we'll go down to item two B, when Mr. Harris gets done, we'll go back to the school nurses, Jackson County High School, AJROTC, item eight, I'm Dr. Brad Harris, are you ready, sir?
I think I gave everybody over there a pamphlet. We kind of started talking about this in last March, when we knew Colonel Whittaker and Sergeant Smith were both going to retire. We knew it would be difficult to find someone, but I had no idea how difficult. You can go to that second page, Positions in Kentucky, it just talks about what's open right now. Both bowers are open, they've been publicly posted since March the 23rd, that is when we received the renovations. Today, and we looked again today to make sure none of them were filled, there are twenty-four open positions on the Kentucky Educator Placement System website. Several of these are in our area, which include one in South, one in North, Withfield County, Redwood County, Alaski County, Perry County, and Montgomery County. So all of those are schools without at least one JROTC instructor. I actually talked to one of the principals in Laurel County, and they've even talked about moving their program possibly at some point to the Center for Innovation there, which is their vocational school, and just having both schools combined, because they're having such a hard problem, such a problem filling their spots. So it's not just us, there's a lot of people throughout the state. In addition, Mr. Bishop, he does a reverse search, like if I'm looking for a math teacher or a science teacher, he can go on there and do a reverse search in KAPS, and that lets him know who's actively seeking jobs. Right now, there are no people actively seeking JROTC jobs in the state of Kentucky. Nobody's put on there that they would like a job. So if you'll turn over to page three, here's some things that we've done to advertise. We posted on the Army website as soon as they would update it, number three twenty-seven. Posted on the KEPS website on three twenty-three. We contacted the following people at Fort Knox, Maurice Bennett, Paul Blackman, Andrew Caballo, and Johnny Gavin. We posted on our webpage and the Facebook page and the district page several times. Posted it on MD, that's something that we normally don't do, but we knew this one was going to be difficult to fill, so we went ahead and reached out to them. We sent an email to Principal Liz Sird throughout Kentucky, to see if anybody had someone on staff or knew someone in their family that might be interested. We sent an email to the opening to all Jackson County Public and School Employees, to see if they had a family member that might be retired military. In process of advertising with the Harvard Leader and the Louisville Courier-Journal, but also, one thing in that, there's also some positions in the Fayette-Jefferson school system, so we're going to advertise there, but a lot of times, you know, those bigger school systems, they will swallow some of them faster than we can. We reached out to EKU and WKU JROTC programs, to inquire about anyone that recently retired. Sergeant Tencher and Sergeant Anglin from the National Guard have been actively seeking qualified candidates since early April to help us. We contacted the Army, Navy, and the Marine recruiters that visit the schools, to see if they had anyone that would be interested in those positions, and they have not to this point. We contacted the Bluegrass Army Depot, they've been known to hire a lot of former veterans. They had no one that was retired that was interested in the position. Also, before Colonel Whittaker retired, he sent out numerous emails to all of his contacts. We had a response, I think it came last April, it was a person at Fort Knox, it seemed to be promising, but he was an attorney and he took a job somewhere else closer to his home, he was retired. Turn on to the next page. Due to confidentiality, we can't release the names, but we have had six people that I feel like seriously inquired about the position. I did make an initial job offer to two separate ones. One of the candidates didn't qualify through Fort Knox, we can talk a little about that. He had twelve years of military experience, he'd worked in the school system for over twenty years in a different position, but they would not give him a waiver. The candidate that didn't qualify would qualify starting in January of 2025, so they're starting to realize what a problem this is, not only in Kentucky, but other states. I mean, many, many listings throughout the nation for these programs. In 2025, someone with ten years of military service will be able to apply for these positions. But, you know, January 2025 is a long time. We definitely want to find someone for them. Turning on over to some of the requirements, which I think sometimes is confusing to people. It's not just someone that's served four years in the military or eight years, you do have to be retired military, which is at least twenty years of service. Or a waiver due to combat-related injury. So right now, there are no other waivers or emergency provisions that will allow someone to come in and fill those positions. Only eighteen percent of military members end up retiring from the military. Eighty-two percent leave the field before retirement age, so that means eighty-two percent of our veterans wouldn't be eligible to fill these positions. Due to this and the lack of qualified candidates, the military is in the process of creating the additional waivers that will start in January 2025. Anyone with ten years of service would be able to be an instructor. One of our potential candidates has twelve years of service, so he would be eligible if we were looking at that time. Educators who are hired without a college degree, they do have to get six hours of college classes every two years in order to maintain their certification. You can look on this page, this is strictly Army information from Fort Knox, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know what all that means. When we hire candidates, we have to send it to Fort Knox to see if they will approve it. So when we send it to Fort Knox, it could be somebody that is still retired military that might have something in their background that prevents them from being an instructor in this school. I hope I've answered some of your questions. We desperately want to find somebody. It's a great program. One thing about it, it is student-led, so we have been able to keep things going with the subs that we have. Mr. Angel, Mr. Bishop are trying to do a good job, they're going to the events, we've had Sergeant Anglin, Sergeant Tencher, we've had a Marine recruiter that's been helping doing drills and different things, but it doesn't replace somebody that could be there full-time, so we're actively seeking that. Do you all have any questions about?
We need to move on to the other side of the page.
Yeah, it's Curtis, Kurt Angel's been there a little bit more than Mr. Bishop, he's doing the after-school events too, so they have been able to go, they went to the Springberry Festival, they went to another after-school event, they're still doing Color Guard and all the sporting events, so that's kind of going on as normal. Some of the Army recruiters and National Guard recruiters have been doing drills and stuff with them after school, so they've been, a lot of people pitched in. But obviously, we would like to find a full-time person. At least one and two if we could.
Is the only thing that's changing from 25 is ten years rather than twenty?
They said that there would be some additional waivers that they would discuss, but that's the first one that they told us. So we're kind of excited about that one, but, you know, I think that that is about forty to forty-five percent of people have up to ten years of military experience. Because sometimes, you know, if persons had, if they're in the National Guard, their service time doesn't count, like they were being active duty, a person would have to be in the Guard longer to get those years of service, so that's a little confusion too, that even some of the military personnel try to apply. Any other questions? We'd love to find somebody, I hope if somebody knows somebody out there, if somebody's watching this on PRTC, you know someone that's retired military, we'd love to have. It's a great program, we've got about seventy students in it, they do a lot of good in the community, we definitely want to keep it going.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Go back to item eight, Family Healthcare Associates School Nurse Program Presentation, Carla, if you want to replay a little bit more.
Okay. Ms. Kim is here, she's Kimberly Powell, she's our Director of Operations. Her and Ms. Frederick are going to give a little presentation on just our services and the things that we can do in the school.
Mr. Smith, would you all like to have the handout, since we don't have a flash drive?
That would be nice.
If you'd like to go ahead and start out, I thank you all for having a share and for the warm reception that our nurses in your school systems were, we're really pleased with that. FHCA in your school system is promotion and prevention in the 23, 24 school year and beyond. Everybody's getting confused, and I think most of you all know all of my school nurses here, is that correct? Why do you need FHCA in your school system? It's cost-effective. Funds saved on our setting for schools can be used for more teachers or staff, additional programs, needed materials and new equipment. And I think most of you all here know that we are free to the county, we don't charge anything for coming into your schools. Our nurses are all professionally licensed and accredited. We are backed by Family Healthcare Associates, they have a solid primary care practice for more than twenty years, actually, I think it's twenty-two to be exact. This service can be utilized by both the students and the staff to increase and maintain attendance. Vaccinations, well care, and physicals are all given onsite, there's no cost to the school systems, and that includes the staff. There's no copay or anything if a staff member or a student has private insurance, that feels good, welcome to be safe as school nurse. You can set, the school saves money while receiving optimal care. You can minimize your funds from your general friends from money safe with our program. We provide the healthiest environment for learning, is our mutual goal. Higher attendance rates and better learning with access to all of our school nurses. Immunizations provided by FHCA at no cost to your school systems. Also, flu shots are provided to your school systems at no cost. Practitioner services via either an MD or an APRN to ensure that you are receiving optimal care. Care might be provided to infant children and students as well. And some of the school systems, I know that sometimes the parents will contact Carla or Leo's or one of the girls just to be seen as well, and, you know, that helps a lot of times because we'll have nurses and we can't get to the doctor, so we will take care of them as well. Nurses on-site in your schools, they are professionally licensed and are accredited, they're captain, reliable and honest. They have an MD oversight by a certified pediatrician, I can't talk to that, and APRN providers. We are currently serving forty-two school campuses, we are affiliated with NASN, we're backed by a solid practice, and our practice will move into the years. Our goal, and this is one of the things we'll first at our presentation, I was actually present for the first presentation, that would be it, was one of our, one of our points of trying to bring out to you all was, our goal and yours as well, is to improve the attendance in your school system. So is to make students to have access to professional care while they're at school staff as well, if they choose to use our services. There's an availability, availability on-site care improves attendance rates. Teachers and school employees also have access to professional care through school nurses. Your family members also can see a school nurse if they, if they sense desire. It cuts down on such a few teachers and low staffing rates for the business. Vaccinations, well care, and physicals are done on-site. As many of, many of you all know, and this is just add living in there, this is not actually in the handout, we have done several sports physical clinics just right at the beginning of the school year as well. But we retain students and staff who would otherwise need to leave school to obtain any of the above services. We do onsite vaccinations for flu, hepatitis, meningococcus, and many more. We do regular vaccinations to cut down on the many immuno-able illnesses among students. The cumulative cost segments to school districts, diabetic education and nutrition counseling is also available. We do asthma treatments, we have the asthma action plans at all of the schools. Prescription treatment available for colds, sore throat, lice, and other common illnesses is also available. School and sports physicals are offered, including your kindergarten physicals. We do hearing vision, oral health, and scoliosis screenings. Family medication administration, FHCA nurses and train school staff to administer in our absence. And, you know, unfortunately, sometimes in our absences, we do have to rely on the school to help us out. That doesn't happen very often, but when it does, we'll look back for your staff as well. The bottom line is, we're here to bridge the gap between health and learning. Want healthy children learn more readily and retain more knowledge. It saves money, probably save your health and your care. Health care is available without having to leave school, that's advantageous for healthy learning, better attendance levels, parent satisfaction, and school staffing. Any nurse already covering a position will be offered first refusal, should you have another opening, like if someone should quit. Any of your school nurses would be offered, say for instance, Carla's or whatever, say for instance, she left Toner and Ashley stepped up and said, "I want to go to Toner," and she would have the first opportunity to do that. And we have to pay the pay rates for our nurses. What questions do you want to add to that?
Great partnership we've done as we've been here.
I want to say nine.
I think it's nine. It's been a great partnership. You guys provide the services, we provide the supplies, and of course, we're with you. But you did great services for our students, and so we value the partnership, and we hope we continue it for many years.
We appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
On item two C, Maintenance Technology Assist, Maintenance of Technology Assist, and Strategic.
Cameron, now we're going to switch places here.
So we have ticket system for maintenance and technology, so this is just an upgrade, is that able to raise up?
Yeah, this is a upgrade and also kind of a consolidation with maintenance and technology. Sorry, it's been a minute to get these settings. All right, so like Mr. Smith said, we are doing an upgrade. Our former ticketing system, or help desk ticketing for technology, was a great system. However, staff was not able to access it at home, and they had to be on our district network in order to do so. We have a lot of visitors in and out of the district, and it just made it a little bit more difficult for those that are frequent visitors to put in tickets, and then also for our staff to do so on, say, an NTI day, or when they're out of the district, for whatever reason. Our maintenance ticketing system was basically a Google form, which was great, however, when our maintenance team was looking for tickets, it didn't give the notifications of a new ticket being submitted, they had to frequently visit that form and then look down the list, a long list, to try to find the new tickets and sort them, and it was, it was a little bit of a, of a disorganization problem. So we are fortunate enough to be able to go occasionally to some technology conferences. We go to a conference every spring, it's called the Kissy Conference, that's held in Louisville. And at that conference, there are several vendors, and we got the opportunity to listen to this vendor, their name is One to One, and the solution just really fit for our needs. So I'm going to kind of go through what it looks like for our staff members, whenever they put in a ticket, and then I'm going to show you the background of what I see and what Ms. Masters would see when she's going in there to review the tickets, so you can kind of see the recording that we get as well. So staff members go to our district webpage, and they go to the dropdowns under staff, and here they have the option to do a maintenance work order or a technology work order. So they could select either, it's going to take them now to the same link before it was two different links, but now it's the same. And they get to this landing page, where they can either choose to submit a technology work order or a maintenance work order. Let's say they're going to do a technology work order. This is the menu, and I'm signing this as I can here, just so that you can see from a staff perspective. Ask a few questions, what's your location, what is your phone number, your VIN number, and then they list, you know, the, the type of asset that they're reporting, the description of the problem, and they submit the ticket. They can also add a picture or file there as well. That's also, that's something new that they weren't able to in the old system either. After they do that, they will get a notification through their email that they have submitted a ticket. I, Cameron, will also get the technology notification through email that a technology ticket has been created, and we're able then to log in as our administrator accounts and see what that ticket was. The email also gives like a brief overview. So when we log in, this is same way with maintenance, so we're in two different queues, the maintenance team is in a queue, and then our technology team is in a queue. Here's what it looks like whenever I log in, it gives me some good reporting on how many tickets we've got, how many are open, how many are in each queue, so I can see, currently we have six IT tickets, we have twenty, twenty-eight maintenance tickets right now that are open. It gives me the list of tickets by site, so you can see which site needs us the most. Cameron has a set schedule, so he goes a certain day a week to a site, and he can then just click there on that site and take care of all of the technology tickets that belong to that particular site. Then it breaks it down, ticket top, and the status, how many have been closed, how many are still open, just a lot of great information. We are also planning on, we didn't get it rolled out in time to do this this year, but we're also planning on using this system. It's very robust, and it has the ability to do inventory. And so we are, we have already uploaded our list of assets, and we are going to continue to do so, and we're going to start using this as our inventory system as well. So that's all an option as well. When we assign, when we will assign Chromebooks to students, then we have the option to see when damages occur also. Or anytime a Chromebook is assigned, if I got a Chromebook assigned to me, and I dropped it and I broke the screen, then I would be able to see broken screen in here as ticket top. And I could narrow it down to, Amanda Ball has dropped three Chromebooks and dropped three, been broken three Chromebook screens. So it'll give us that kind of information too, if, if we need that information for any reason. The frequent offenders of, you know, some of the Chromebook damages are most, are most popular ones, I'll say. So I guess that's about all that I, I did want to tell you one more thing about, we have the option to have an app as well with this program, where we didn't with the other one. It's really handy to put in a ticket, but also, for Cameron and I, we can use our phone to check the tickets if we get a notification, if we don't have our computer with this, or if we're in a, in a room or on the go. So I'm going to show you real quickly what that looks like too. I've got some screenshots from my app. This is what it looks like on the homepage, and mine has that little bar at the top that most staff wouldn't have, because they're not going to be assigning and turning in Chromebooks, but they would see the help desk or portion of it, and they would be able to submit a ticket. And then I have one more picture. It shows you my IT ticket queue, this is just a sample of some of the tickets we've got in right now, and it, it's what Cameron and I will see whenever we go here to look. And the maintenance team also has the same thing, only it would be maintenance requests. Do you all have any questions? We're really excited about this, because I know Ms. Masters was very, she likes it a lot, because it is a big improvement from that maintenance work order that they were doing.
So repeatedly, is this like having an issue with technology or maintenance issues, and actually go to ticket system and report it?
Yes, that is our preference, that's like getting in line.
That is the key.
Yes, and that way everybody gets, you know, we're able to get to people in a more organized manner.
Any questions? Thank you, Amanda. On item two B, Substitute Report, Person I've recorded always, that's enclosed, that's attached to your review with communication standard, please, I'll turn to you, which will lead you to item number three.
Item number three, approval, we will claim for motion. Second. Ms. Masters?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Item number four, approval of the minutes from hour fifteen, twenty twenty-three, ready for motion.
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Item five, approval to adopt the Jackson County Public School Vals, for more tiered system of support for motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item six, approval of full utilization agreement, agreement of community exit council for South Central, here start of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, in motion.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Masters?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item seven, approval of the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four working unit, in motion. motion.
Motion.
Second. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Twits?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Item eight, approval of agree to achieve district insurance budgets for twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four school, in motion. Second.
Second. Yes.
Ms. House? Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item nine, approval to defer following service program, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Item ten, approval of special education labor for shortening school age, wait for individual students, recommended by administration, and release coming, in motion.
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item eleven, item eleven, approval of memorandum of the River Jackson County High School, development of River, effective service from twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year, in motion.
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
The next few items pertaining to projects that we're currently doing in our district, and I have Abby from Contiguity Architecture here to answer some questions, but I think we have some that basically touch everything from school to middle school.
Yeah, so today on the list, we have the BG two and three for the middle school addition renovation. That, the BG two is energy-related items, so it's just us listing what's existing and what different types of construction materials we're putting in the addition. The BG three is probable cost of where we were at, at DD, and Codell, our construction manager handles that. That came in at a good price, so this is just to approve us to move into CDs and kind of wrap up those drawings. And then the rest of those BGs on the list are to wrap up all of our reroute projects we've done and just to close those out.
Have a question for the panel, any items?
Item twenty.
That was too great.
Item two, approval of design developer, PG two, PG three for Jackson County Middle School replacement addition project, PDE, review approved, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item thirteen, approval of BG four for Key Elementary Reroute Project, PDE, review approved, in motion. Second. Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols? Item fourteen, approval of BG four for the Jackson County Middle School, safety, this view, PDE, review approved, in motion.
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols? Item fifteen, approval of revised BG one for the town school reroute and window replacement project, PDE, review approved, in motion.
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item sixteen, approval of revised BG one for San Gav Elementary School, reroute project, PDE, review approved, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Item seventeen, approval to authorize for bid of the Jackson Academy High School Greathouse renovation project, to approve the bid specifications, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen? Item eighteen, approval of KETS FLY twenty-two, twenty-three, technology activity, in motion.
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Item nineteen, approval to establish, reestablished, in motion.
I have a question. Why are we adding two more positions to that position? That updated.
You're talking the safety children position.
Yeah, for the director of grounds and buildings. We're doing a instructional supervisor and safety children administrator.
Director of bids and grants, that's just a catalog. There's no change in salary, no change in days, no change in rate, it's just a catalog. Instructional supervisor, they do our curriculum, they do science adoption, so instructional supervisor, it's a, I guess, a catalog. Director of grants, who's due reservation, the instructional supervisor is attached to it, it's a catalog, it's not a actual position, it's just a catalog, it's empty. On previously. It's just a catalog. Our current record-
So, nobody was actually-
No, it's not, it's not a new position or position name. It's not a new position. The current person who's our director of bids and grants also has instructional supervisor certification, so we thought it would be good to add instructional supervisor to that, so she would be able to create one especially and give her a diverse science adoption selection. There's no change in days, no change in rate, it's just a catalog. No more or less.
So, we need a motion for item nineteen?
Motion.
The second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen? Item twenty, approval of bedroom, in motion. The second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, approval of fundraisers, in motion.
I have a question.
Fourteen-nine.
We need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nichols?
Yes.
Item twenty-two, we have a move, down the south with the, uh, red. Item twenty-three, approval to adjourn, in motion.
Yes.
Second. Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?